Motion to approve the agenda.
I want to motion to approve the agenda for the January 10th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Item D, citizens' comments. At this point, we'll allow citizens to comment. They must state their first and last name, where they reside, and they're only allowed three minutes. It's gotta be comments only, no questions. Good to go.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Walk, W A L K. I currently reside at 14410 West Pawnee Avenue. I guess it's technically in Wichita. So I am a speech-language pathologist. I recently moved back to Goddard. I've lived in Germany the last eight and a half years, where my husband pastored a church over there, a Christian church that served American military. And I have a speech-therapy clinic there that also caters to the American military kiddos. I have purchased the, what used to be the Special Education Co-op Building over in the industrial park with intention to open up a multidisciplinary clinic here in the Goddard area, bringing speech therapy, occupational therapy, and eventually, physical therapy to serve both children and adults in the Goddard area and hopefully west up here as well. Currently, the closest clinic is near Everly Farm on West 21st Street. So you figure families from here and west are driving a good 30, 45 minutes to access care. So I'm hoping to eliminate that. And yeah, so I'm gonna be opening up hopefully March 1st. I've been in conversations with Mr. Scoggins, because currently the zoning restrictions of the industrial park are quite limiting in terms, as you know, in terms of what types of buildings can go in there. He mentioned that on the docket for next month will be a consideration to kind of redefine that industrial zone, to kind of loosen up the language a little bit, to allow for other businesses and other community resources to be coming into that area. So I came tonight after talking to Mr. Scoggins just to kind of put in my hope and to plead that that would be the case, that you all would consider that next month as a redefining that language so that I, you know, my business and others can come into that area. I got excited. I've lived a lot of places. I've lived in Nashville, Boston, Atlanta, back to Nashville and then Germany for the last, well, eight and a half years. And the thought of coming home, I grew up here, K through 12 in Goddard schools. My family is all still here. I get excited about what this community could be and especially that area, what we could make that area be for families and other businesses for the community. So that's kind of why I wanted to come tonight, to present that to you and ask that you would consider loosening the language of those definitions for the industrial park.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? We're in. Mr. Chair, this time if you wish, you can close citizens' comments.
Do you have some comments?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E, this is approval of minutes. So this is the approved, the Planning Commission regular meeting minutes from December 13th, 2021. A quick review, we had a conditional use permit for our carport, variance for the carport, a rezoning of the ICT development, conditional use permit in the county, and plenty of plat for Teganequa Wildlife Park and the final plat for Teganequa Wildlife Park.
I want to motion to approve the Planning Commission regular minutes for December 13th, 2021.
I'll say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Item F, board zone appeals, there are none. Old business. Item G, there are none. This is item H, new business. So we'll start with item H1. This is the vote on the new chair and vice chair. So quick background, according to the Planning Commission bylaws, the position of chair and vice chair must be decided by a decision of the Planning Commission annually. This is done by selecting individuals from amongst the existing Planning Commission members to represent the positions of chair and vice chair to help govern the meetings. The chair and vice chair are allowed to vote, with the chair only voting after they have found a motion or a second from amongst the Planning Commission. The chair cannot make a motion or a second, but the vice chair can unless the vice chair is filling in the role of chair when chair is absent. So this is page one, Article 1 of Officers. Sort of highlights what we just talked about. Financially, none. Legally, it's already been approved as the form. It is recommended to the Planning Commission. There is none at this point. Record the vote done by the Planning Commission for position of chair and vice chair. At this point, if you would, open the folders in front of you. You'll find a sheet for both the position of chair and vice chair. If you see your name on there and you don't wish to be included in the decision of chair or vice chair, feel free to just announce that and we'll strike that name off. Other than that, we'll go ahead and do a vote. There's a checkbox beside each name. If you want to choose the position of chair for that individual, vote for that individual, please put a check beside their name. When you are done, you can pass it to either side and I will collect them. Do the same for the position of vice chair if you could. Sorry, I should have specified that. There's two sheets in there. Should be for chair and vice chair, two sheets. Check them both. Who you want to represent each position. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We will perform a quick tally. I will announce the vote as we move forward, so... So, position of chair, I have one for Shane Grayfin. Position of vice chair, I have one for Jamie Coyne. Position of chair, I have one for Shane Grayfin. Position of vice chair, I have one for Jody Crowe. Position of chair, I have one for Shane Grayfin. Position of vice chair, I have one for Jamie Coyne. Position of chair, I have one for Jamie Coyne. Position of vice chair, I have one for Justin Parks. Position of chair, I have Shane Grayfin. Position of vice chair, I have Jody Crowe. So for position of chair, Shane Grayfin is unanimous. For position of vice chair, we have a split between Jamie Coyne and Jody Crowe. So we're gonna have to have a rerun on the vice chair position. So give me a second here. We're gonna have to... The anticipate there to be a split, excuse me. Give me one second. So if there's another tie, I suppose at this point, we would just consider it a tie and we would just leave Jamie Coyne, excuse me, Shane Grayfin as chair. Vice chair would be unfilled until I can confirm if legal what we do after that point. Because I can't. If the leave of a vice chair stays the same and it's still split, then I'm just gonna have to confirm if legal how we would do a split on the vice chair position.
The tie would flat out.
Might have to just leave out once there's a fold.
I guess that's true, we vote just the two or all candidates?
No, at this point, you've since... It's just for vice.
Well, but then the two candidates, the two ties, so myself and...
That's right, yeah. So at this point, you're just putting out who you want. Either for vice chair or vice chair. So you're just gonna write down one name. It's either gonna be Jody Crowe or Jamie Coyne at this point. They will be burned and I will consume them. Thank you, thank you. Jamie Coyne. Jamie Coyne. Jamie Coyne. Jamie Coyne. And Jamie Coyne. Okay. Well, thank you very much. That made it a little bit easier for me. So at this point, I would like to congratulate Shane Grayfin for being chair for 2022. Jamie Coyne, congratulations for being vice chair for 2022. In the absence of Shane Grayfin, you will have to take his duties, so. Thank you very much. That's it for item H1. This is item H2. So this is the Scooter Site Plan. So Phelps Engineering Incorporated has submitted a site plan application for a new Scooters drive-through coffee kiosk at the corner of US 54 and Cedar. The Scooters will be located in between Cedar and Main Street. This is on land that will be reviewed for a final plat by the City Council on January 18th, 2022. So the Planning Commission approved the plat for the land for on August 9th, 2021, contingent upon final engineering review for the stormwater. Baughman Engineering, P A, who represents developer, has worked with the city engineer to incorporate a 50 by 80-foot, excuse me, stormwater drainage easement on the southeast corner to capture those stormwater runoff to ease the impacts of rainwater on Cedar. So our engineer and Baughman Engineering have determined, based on, you know, their agreement that this would be adequate stormwater detention, which is what the Planning Commission approved on August 9th. They said that they would want to approve the final plat contingent upon final engineering review for stormwater. This is the final engineering review for stormwater. It's been satisfied by both engineering firms. So now it's gonna go before the City Council on the 18th of January for the final plat to be finalized. And after which, if the site plan is approved today, then Scooters will be able to go forward and hold their permit because the plating will be satisfied per state law. The developer is asking for a sign variance to add more wall signs to the proposed development. The city subdivision regulations limit the location of wall signs to each building face abutting a street. So Scooters, even though right now it's gonna be on a pretty much wide-open, empty lot, it's only really abutting US 54 and Cedar. It's technically not abutting Main Street. And there is a street to the south of it. That's a private drive. It's not really a street in the sense, in the formal sense of the word. And so they're asking for additional signs, wall signs, because we say that the subdivision regulations only allows one wall sign per street abutting. Technically, it's only abutting two streets. And also, it's wrapped, the lot itself has to be abutting the street. And this particular lot, the way it's platted, it's surrounded by a separate lot. So it's kind of an L lot around the Scooters lot. And so it's only abutting two streets. And so it's only allowed two wall signs. But they typically, if you've been to a Scooters in Wichita or the surrounding area, you'll see that they usually have a Scooters logo on each wall, on each side. And so they're asking for the same thing that they do in Wichita. And so they're asking for a variance to ask, basically for those accommodations. They are also asking for a monument sign, but there's nothing that would require a variance for their monument sign that they're asking for. It's 10 feet and it's just standard monument sign. It's not a pole sign. And it's not exceeding the maximum gross square footage either. Planning Commission is reviewing the site plan for a new Scooters drive coffee kiosk. So monument sign is proposed. That meets the subdivision regulations. They are requesting a variance for additional wall signs on separate building faces. Zoning is a C2 general business district. The building gross square foot area is 684, heights 19 feet, percent of lot coverage is 3%. Gross lot coverage is 0.5, which is around $21,997. So this is a concept design that's been brought together for the site plan. It's part of the requirements that we have in our subdivision regulations. So you can kind of see, and if there's more detail, you can zoom in on your agenda packet. But this is Cedar right here and Main Street is over on the side over here. This is US 54. So if you remember, Mr. Aaron Schnuck, who owns the property, did a deal with the Kansas Department of Transportation. Or Kansas Department of Transportation has given him sort of a north, a section of the northeast corner in return for a section of the northwest corner. So they did like a swap and they're gonna go through the plating. So Aaron Schnuck's gonna go through the plating to kind of incorporate that swap of land. And that's still that US 54 will get, will have more frontage alignment over here. When in the future, if they ever do the 54 flyover, they'll have more right-of-way. So that's been incorporated. So then you have a private drive in this area right here that'll loop around. And here is the actual Scooters right there. So you'll loop around this area and I believe that order sign is over here. But we can dive into that a little bit more detail. The monument sign will be over this section. So these are the elevations. You have east and south elevation. This is a concept design. There it is at night. Financially, none. This is a site plan, so there is no type of legal requirements for posting it or publishing it. Legally, it's approved as the form. It is recommended that the Planning Commission approve the site plan for the new Scooters drive-through contingent upon review of a variance request for additional wall signs. So variances by state law, we have to publish them, allow 20 days to lapse prior to, prior to Planning Commission reviewing them. So it's already been published. It's just we have to consider it 20 days after the publication. So that's gonna have to be February 14th. So at this point, I will invite Jake Burnett of Loving Cup to come up and speak on behalf of the developer. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask them and hopefully the two of us together can answer them.
Thanks for the introduction.
Yeah.
Very well done. Couldn't have done better on the presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. As you mentioned, my name is Jake Burnett. I'm with Loving Cup LLC. We're a Scooters Coffee franchisee. We actually have a few locations in Wichita as well. So we're looking to develop a, it's actually 664 square feet marginal difference for the drive-through-only kiosk. As you guys saw, the site plan, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. If it's beyond my scope, I can try and dial in our civil or architect to answer any questions. But thank you for taking the time to meet with us. Very excited to be here and to hopefully serve Goddard soon. So I'm here for any questions you might have.
Is this one just gonna be a one-sided drive-through?
Correct. Yeah, so we used to build the double-sideds. We've kind of transitioned more to a single drive-through system with the headset, so.
Is the other side walk-up or is it only drive-through?
Oh, we actually only do drive-through. We're kind of a, an assembly line in there. And so whenever a walk-up window is added, it really derails the efficiency of the model. And so the beautiful thing about this is when we focus on the one point of service, then we're, we're gonna be incredibly fast with the cars as they're coming through and can get around a minute a car to prevent any stacking, any stacking up that's unnecessary. So the walk-up is a, is a nice idea and, you know, some cities, you know, in California and areas like that will require it, but it really does kind of defeat the purpose of our drive-through-only business. We may not have exactly those flowers, but I wanna give you guys a good look and... Yeah, I think we have a very, you know, presentable, attractive building and hopefully it'll be a nice addition to the city of Goddard.
Got two different site plans on there, Page 34 and 42.
Yeah, so we require several different site plans per se. So you have landscaping site plan, electrical, overall layout, and then a signage site plan as well. And so there's, there's gonna be several different types of site plans as well.
One shows the dumpsters being in the southwest corner. And this, this one, 42, shows it looks like the southeast corner of what, Cedar?
If we're able to pull it up.
Well, we don't have...
Is it on here?
Not completely, but this one is gonna have...
If it's in the agenda packet, I've also got the...
To that one shows it there in the...
This one?
Yeah, southeast.
Busy the same spot just on the other side.
So the intention, let's see, more of mine getting this pulled up?
That elevator says do not enter, shows a dumpster on 34 and almost like pull-up parking on the very south end.
I might have it pulled up on my computer one moment.
I think the intent would probably be to drive in this way, loop out this way. This would be an exit. This would probably be an exit as well. But I don't think that would miss, unless there was a do not enter there and a do not enter here. Probably would not stop somebody from driving to that area. You would miss it though. I mean, if you drove in from here, I think the order sign's over here, so you would have to end up coming around this way anyway. But I suppose you could drive this way, loop around and get into the queue, unless you tried to cut in front of somebody. But this is the order sign over here, whichever that is. You couldn't really cut in the queue this way. You would have to drive up and you'd come loop around or you'd have to, if there was nobody in this part, you could loop around this way potentially.
I believe, I, it could be mistaken, so I apologize for that. But to my knowledge, this is the site plan we intend to move forward with. And the southeast side would be an access for people to come in. And then the southwest side would be an exit for in case anyone wants to spill out or get out farther south in this part of town. So we really wanna acknowledge the houses and the community and the school to the south of us. And so I think having this road, this kind of private drive back here with the ability for people to get in and out is gonna be helpful. Apologies if we submitted two different things.
So it's okay.
I wonder if one's on an old sign package layout maybe?
It's the overlay with the old buildings that used to be there. They all be assation.
Oh.
Oh, that's probably an old concept design.
I think that's a...
So what it, it's probably more my mistake than it is than their mistake. I took the old, original concept design, which probably got modified to this new design, and overlaid it on top of an aerial image to help give perspective for the built environment around it. So I probably didn't notice that they moved the dumpster in the old design and so I thought it was still an equivalent design. But it was more to give scope of the built environment around the Scooters.
Right.
So that was a mashup of an old design, apparently, the use of an aerial image.
Instead of Fern's using it for KDOT.
Yeah. Yeah, so KDOT, you can, if you want to ask me any more questions, thank you. KDOT is anticipating the 5496 bypass happening. They always have these designs and they'll hold on to designs and the designs can be there for 10, 20, 30, 40 years. They can, they can last a long time. They'll be modified, but they don't generally, they generally don't go away. It seems like they'll hold on to these designs. They'll have them for a long time. They don't put them away. They may collect us, but the design's never officially voided out. It's just in there and it exists. And so 5496 technically still exists and so is the 54 flyover through Goddard. And so that's why when the flyover, when they actually lift it off the ground and fly it through Goddard, they need more right-of-way. And so they've been buying right-of-way or swapping people or paying portions or figuring out how to acquire more right-of-way along 54 when they elevate it because they need that, they need more space when they do that elevation. It's the same thing you see over there off of the southeast corner of 183rd, just on the east side of Walmart. They bought the land where that old horse barn was. They bought that land for the same reason. It's because they're anticipating they need more right-of-way when they elevate it, so when they fly through. So that's what they did with Mr. Aaron Schnuck, is they're saying, hey, anytime anyone builds close to this and they encroach in our theoretical right-of-way, they jump to and they say, we need to buy it from that individual or come to some sort of agreement so that they can purchase that right-of-way when they elevate 54 in X number of years. So I, it's hard to define it.
I was just asking, because I mean, the private private access on the north side there, how that would tie in with...
With it, yeah. It's, I can't say. The design plan originally was, I think, so the 5496 bypass and then the 54 elevation flyover through Goddard, I think was originally anticipated conceptually in 1998, I think, or something along those. Don't quote me on that one. And then it went through several design modifications. I think the last one was 2005 maybe or 2010. But it's, they still need to modify it again. The cost of it has gone from about half billion to 1.2 billion dollars for the project. And so I don't know when they'll actually anticipate doing that. Right now, KDOT's approved it though with Aaron Schnuck saying that this is all they needed. And so that land swap went through. And so now the plating is acceptable before KDOT. So this design technically is also acceptable to KDOT since they've worked with Aaron Schnuck for that layout. Granted, I can't speak definitively on KDOT projects.
I mean, I would anticipate it being something like the Murphys, you know, you got the Fern and Drew, you also have the private access.
Potentially. Like I said, I have to disqualify myself. I'm not a transportation engineer and I don't work exclusively for Kansas Department of Transportation. Their ideas are malleable and they happen to be subject to change over time, so. But yeah, I, as far as I can tell, working with Baughman, KDOT has accepted that land swap and they're going through that plating process now with the legal description and everything else. And so they, they find it acceptable. That's enough of a buffer between Scooters and that development and that, that frontage zone.
I make a motion to approve the site plan for the new Scooters drive-through contingent upon the variance request for additional wall, all signs.
All say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. If not, stay for the rest of the evening or have a great night.
I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
This is item I. This is a staff report. So the staff report for January 10th will just simply be an outline of potential goals. They're all tentative. Obviously, goals change during the year. More pressing priorities tend to, you know, supersede things that we have planned. But these are our goals for 2022 and obviously they're malleable. But one, one goal that we've had and we're gonna continue to look at will be annexation. So the city will look into annexing certain land that has already expressed an interest in being annexed or certain lands that would benefit from annexation during the negotiations with the property owner. This annexation process would be with the intent to grow Goddard in a sustainable way that runs in line for a comprehensive plan in our 2035 growth plan. So we talked a little about annexation. Planning Commission and City Council, we met on May 10th, had that joint session. And we outlined a rural-urban intent zoning classification with this purpose of annexing people and allowing them to continue to exist in a sort of a county-style lifestyle without having too many undue burdens of an urban lifestyle, but they'll still be within the city limits of Goddard. It would just be a very relaxed zoning classification. So we're hoping to use that as sort of a negotiation chip when we present it to individuals so they don't have to feel like we're unduly burdening them if we did an annexation. This is hopefully, obviously, from the expressions that we heard from December 13th, individuals want to live a certain type of lifestyle. So we're hoping that we're able to at least accommodate that to some extent with our rural, with urban intent. They'll be able to keep their livestock, horses and things of that nature. They'll be able to keep their livestock, horses and things of that nature that people are typically used to having. And so we're hoping that this will be something that will run in line and be a little bit more malleable to them and a little bit more acceptable. So that way, when we grow, it won't be, it won't seem like such a burdensome growth process. Number two would be our commercial growth. The city will continue to look for commercial partners who would like to create new businesses in Goddard. This will be through active outreach and GIS analytics to determine good matches for the city's population growth. So we have a really good platform. It's called ESRI. It's an environmental science research institute. It's one of the best software platforms that actually in the world. And we're really fortunate to have that software available to us. And so we utilize it quite regularly. We have what's called Business Analysts Online. It's a subsidiary of ESRI. Basically, we're able to use that as to determine trade areas and growth patterns. And we can sort of utilize this information to come up with sort of site plan, potential partnerships that we can sort of leverage to show to potential businesses to say, hey, we have these available land. This is our trade area. These are our metrics. This is our median household income. This is our traffic volume. This is what we see. We think we are desirable to what potentially you are seeing as well. And so maybe we should sit down and talk this. And then we can meet about the table and hopefully be able to generate more businesses like scooters and other potential businesses down the road to help incentivize that growth. As you're aware, residential usually is what leads and then commercial follows the residential. But obviously residential is assessed at 11.5%. The commercial is the big money ticket at 25% assessment. So we generate a lot more property taxes off commercial, which is helpful for the city when it's growing for potential projects like a pedestrian bridge across US 54, something along those lines. It'll help cash flow those capital improvement projects. Excuse me. Number two is infill development. So the city will look at maximizing the return on existing infrastructure by encouraging development on vacant lots. It is a city-owned property. If it is city-owned property, city staff will outline some of these properties for sale. The private developer will start generating property taxes off the land if it's approved by city council. So any land that's actually owned by the city has to be approved by city council to actually be sold to somebody. It can't just be, you know, I can't just arbitrarily decide if we're going to sell Linear Park, you know, to, for a bunch of condominiums. And so it has to go before city council, so these things get outlined. But the city does own a couple of lots around the city that obviously are exempt from property taxes because we own them. But if we were to sell it to a property owner or a potential developer, even a private owner, a private citizen, they would be able to build a house on it and the city actually starts generating property taxes off that. So, and on top of that, since there's already a street or city sewer, city water, it's already leading up to it. There's no specials on these lots. There, all the infrastructure that leads up to the lot is already available. So it's just simply under economically utilized lot that we could otherwise be generating property taxes off of. So that's, the hope is to hopefully offset some of these and start generating some revenue off these lots. And then number four would be the industrial district modification. So as Jennifer Walk spoke about earlier today, in 2021, there was discussion around allowing industrial district to be more flexible in its land uses. And city staff is preparing a draft modification to this end. Zoning classification I-1, we only have one industrial zoning classification, it's I-1. It's the Dylan's Warehouse and it's the industrial park. Those are the only two areas that have the industrial I-1 zoning classification. It's the only zoning, industrial zoning classification we have. The zoning classification is for industrial classification of land uses. However, recent changes in the market trends have made zoning districts more desirable for warehouses, storage as a business incubator. Some of these proposed uses would not comply with the zoning district and would require a special use application. We saw this with Mr. Ungles with the restaurant. That's one example. The intent of modifying the zoning classification would be to allow more flexible uses of existing or proposed warehouse spaces capitalized on changing market trends and allow for a more inclusive zoning classification while not compromising for more severe land uses. So what I mean by this particularly is that we're basically making it a little bit more inclusive, but not wildly more inclusive. So we're not going to say that, what we're hopefully trying to propose here is that we're going to allow for more types of commercial and industrial land uses. But we wouldn't say that all of a sudden you can have orphanage in here or that you can have your house inside of an industrial zoning classification. But we're saying that perhaps if you want to rent a warehouse for retail, personal retail, that would be considered acceptable. Whereas right now in our industrial, industrial district, it actually prohibitively expressly prohibits retail of retail businesses being within that particular zoning classification for specific types of retail. And so if you wanted to, for example, buy en masse like Amazon pallets and sell them out of a warehouse in the industrial district, you couldn't do that. If you wanted to manufacture parts and then sell them wholesale or sell them retail to another manufacturer, you could. But you can't buy in bulk and then resell in the industrial district. This is a trend that's been starting to pick up in certain areas. It's actually starting to pick up in Wichita, but one idea that we had was in Kansas City, they have what's called First Fridays. And what they did is they revitalized a large industrial district by allowing for sort of a grassroots movement for people to actually do consignment sales outside of abandoned warehouses in an industrially zoned district. And so the idea is that if the industrial district is underutilized, why is it underutilized? Because we see a bunch of empty lots there. We know that there is a turnover rate. And we also know that some of the warehouses that are already built are sitting vacant. We don't necessarily know exactly why, but we can theorize why. And we're hoping that making that industrial district a little bit more relaxed will help incentivize it to grow in such a way that doesn't compromise the core values, but allows for a little bit more flexibility. So that's, that's the idea. And as, as Jennifer Walk, who spoke, touched on, that's one of, that's, she spoke as one of actually five or six other individuals who've reached out to me about that. But the zoning district doesn't allow for that type of business to be there. So that's kind of where we're open. Planning Commission will take that into consideration. At that, with that, that's the end of that. And there'll be a planning commissioner comments, it'll be item J.
I have a question on that. On the industrial. From what you described, maybe I'm missing something, but it didn't sound like what Jennifer is talking about. It's like a, you know, a physical therapy, where people are maybe coming in and out would be part of that in that, in that, in what we're, you're proposing to.
In which way exactly? You mean because she was talking about a particular land use and we're talking about amending the industrial districts so that includes more different types of land uses? That, that's then goal would be something similar to that.
So what she was, which, what her physical therapy would be one, would be that type of business would be included in?
Yes, yeah, so we, we would include that as one of the, as one of the acceptable principal uses. So a special use basically says if it's not a principal use or a conditional use, sometimes they'll outline what kind of special uses are allowed. But also a special use is sort of a blanket catch-all. If we can't define it as being an acceptable use or a conditional use, then we'll just consider it a special use. And special uses are treated like rezoning where it has to come before planning commission and then go before city council after it's been published in a 20 days lapse, kind of like a rezoning, exactly like a rezoning. Kind of like you saw with Mr. Jordan Ungles and his restaurant. And so she's wanting to know basically the same thing, which is that every time a different type of potential business that's not wildly unacceptable in that area presents itself, doesn't have to go through a special use. And in this particular case, if we can make the industrial district a little bit more malleable, we might be able to incentivize it so that more people are able to be able to locate new businesses inside the industrial district. That won't necessarily compromise some of the core values of an industrial district.
My thought is, I mean, and I, I know what's over there, but you know, you have people like a physical therapy and you've got kids. You've got, you know, people coming in and out and kids coming out in an industrial area. You know, is it, I don't know, there's fencing or something that, you know, is, you just have a lot of people coming in and out in places where there's machinery.
Yeah, certainly that's something to take into consideration when we go, when it's brought before planning commission, if there's any type of special provisions. For example, if it was a physical therapy and you're saying that, well, you need to have more off-street parking, then that could be a consideration. If you want to say that since it's therapy of some sort, then perhaps it needs more screening to allow for that. Maybe it needs more additional signage. That's, those are all things that we take into consideration to do that. I think one reason why the industrial district simply hasn't been fully utilized is we don't have a port or Kansas, so there's no water. There's no, there's no pier. There's nothing to really generate a lot of strong industrial growth. And we're not, we don't have any tracks. We don't have any rail, so we don't have any way to really import a lot of freight. The only way that it really comes in is going to be down Goddard Road. Obviously, an industrial district is like a large cul-de-sac for lack of a better term because it just comes down Goddard Road and you turn into industrial district and you loop around and you go back out. There is no interconnectivity there. So a lot of lots are just not built and a lot of the warehouses are just vacant. So allowing for that use, yeah, I mean, if you, if you are concerned about the possibility of there being freight in proximity to children, that is a concern. We do have Four Feathers there. They sell athletic attire, things of that nature. So there's still people interacting. I haven't heard necessarily concerns about that. But if we did want to, if we felt like perhaps it would be a concern down the road, we could add extra provisions on there for, you know, if it was physical therapy or if it dealt with anything with children, perhaps they needed additional signage or extra provisions in there. That's something that can be taken into account. Certainly, it's perfectly within your purview to add any extra provisions in there.
So is the thought here we're going to modify I-1 or are you going to create additional?
The thought would be to modify I-1, just to open it up. We haven't, I-1 is, it's defined exactly like you would expect industrial zoning classification to be defined as. Unfortunately, since it's defined exactly as you'd expect an industrial zoning classification to be defined as, it's not being utilized because the intent was to maximize a zoning classification to allow for, you know, slaughterhouses and things of that nature, but we don't see that actually happening. And the reason we don't see that happening, so they define the land uses as being acceptable in this area, assuming that those land uses would move into that area. And this is something I've talked about with all the planning commissioners. It's, it's like you're projecting what you're hoping something will see in that area. But the markets don't reflect that all the time. Sometimes they rarely do. And so you'll define an area saying, we want all houses here, commercial restaurants here, industrial district here. We're good to go. And then the market says, well, we actually want to be over here and we want our houses over here. Restaurants are over here. Industrial, we don't care because there's no rail. And so you're like, okay, you have a big swath of area that's only 50% utilized and you're trying to figure out why. And industrial is assessed at 25% just like commercial, so we're trying to catch that. And it's, how can we catch that? If we modify in such a way to make it a little bit looser without compromising it completely, without just saying, we're not going to have an industrial district anymore, we're just going to zone a commercial. If we can make it a little bit looser so that, what will that do? And then we reflect on that and we say that, okay, down the road, is it, is it functioning better now? And then we review it five years later and say, is it, is it functioning better now or is it not? If it's not, do we modify it again? That's kind of what planning does overall. It's not just about changing things and looking to the future, but it's also looking in the past and saying, the zoning that we have now, is it functioning or is it not functioning? Is it reflective of the market and the broader economy or is it not? Are we missing our opportunities or are we capitalizing on them? And that, that's hopefully what we're going to be presenting to you guys in February. If that makes sense. Excuse me.
Bringing it from Longbow, was that not an in-the-11 day school?
There was a daycare, uh, school there, yeah. Yeah, the one that Mr. Ungles owns now used to be a school. I don't know how or why, or I don't know if it was a school and then it was zoned or if it was zoned and a school was, that was a long time ago, so I'm not sure how that, how that happened.
You brought up slaughterhouses that we had.
Yeah, Struts is obviously the only one we have.
I mean, don't they own the land next door?
They do, but they're not allowed, that's actually, they're not allowed to extend that slaughterhouse onto that empty lot. Technically, that Struts is functioning as a grandfathered use on that particular lot. So the only thing they're allowed to do once they build their new building is distribution and sort of processing. They're not allowed to slaughter on that new lot. So all slaughtering has to stay on their existing lot. After that, it's just processing and distribution and all of them.
Have they, have they come up with any kind of design or any anticipation?
Yeah, they, they are working with it. So they're working with two different people right now. There are architect and they're working with sort of an intermediary between the architect and Struts. And this intermediary, who I spoke with in 2021, helps the architect come up to the practical standards that are necessary for cold storage. And so this person works exclusively with the, with the developer, with the slaughterhouse, with the, the processing, the, you know, the butcher shop, whatever you guys want to use, whatever the appropriate term is. Excuse me, I'm trying to think of what. I don't know what you want to call it, but anyway, the processing plant, whatever. And the architect to say, hey, you need to have cold, by state law, you have to have the cold storage here. The drain tiles have to be here. The lockers have to be here. There's certain state laws that they have to abide by and this person works with them. So I met with that individual and they're helping lay out the plan. And so I saw a rough concept plan. And it's looking pretty good, but there's nothing definitive yet. So this would be I-K, adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.